Okay, council, it is 7:00 PM on November the 6th, 2024. Let's everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I call this meeting to order. Okay, up next, we have roll call. Ms. Martinez?
All councilors present, an aquorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda is the Agenda Approval.
Mayor, we would recommend that you modify the agenda to pull Consent Item C1A, the Ratification of the Planning Commission, to be placed after the last item under Development Services.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Yonvihu.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as amended by City Manager Brooke, City Manager Sanchez.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Good. The next item we have on the agenda is under Citizen Comments. This is the segment of the agenda where we will have those who are in the audience who've turned in their cards. I will call your name and ask you to come up to the podium. When, when I call your name to come up to the podium, you'll make your comments. We do limit the comments to three minutes. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end making your comments at that particular time. So, the first name I have is Lori Smith.
Good evening, Lori Smith, 313 Riverwood Drive. I'm not sure if there are slides that were there, if there are, I'm on slide number nine. Good evening, members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening again. Currently, we have fifty-nine students enrolled in the Alamosa Alternative School. I have fifteen on a waiting list, and I have been alerted about some students hoping to get a fresh start at semester, making the seventy-four students right now could be, could be rece- receiving services if the space was allowed. The seventy-five student cap would be reached very quickly at this point. Our hope is to request that no cap at all be on the educational institution, but if council feels strongly about a cap, we propose an initial cap of a hundred alternative students. The next slide, please. I am here to share insights about our alternative students' unique challenges related to both student parking and enrollment. In addition, we are facing a separate issue with enrollment for the second semester. Due to high demand, like explained earlier on the last slide, we have a waiting list of ten to fifteen students who would like to join the alternative school. As discussions proceed around the potential cap of enrollment, I want to highlight that the interest and need for alternative education remains high at this time. Our program offers a critical path to success for many students who thrive in this environment. The next slide, please. Again, I want us to, if necessary, can we please go to the cap of one hundred? And if you look at, if we do the cap of one hundred, it'd be thirty-four to forty-five, forty-two students on campus at any one time. The next slide, please. Sorry, I'm talking so fast, I got time. When you look at the schedule, I have four schedules. Schedule number four is variant for kids who need to meet the needs of having, being parents, working, and so they have many options, so at any one time I can have anywhere from thirty, twenty-five to thirty students. The next slide, please. Currently, our school serves fifty-nine students, yet only six of them drive. This low number reflects not the lack of need or interest, but rather a significant barrier our students face in accessing driving resources. Costs associated with driver's education, car insurance, and vehicle purchases are simply out of reach for many, especially students who come from financially constrained families. Mo or over, our students are faced with additional challenges due to family schedules and responsibilities, which makes it difficult for them to gain support they need to drive. Consequently, while parking available is adequate, many students lack the resources to drive in the first place. The next slide, please. I'd like you to look, if you did raise the cap to one hundred, ten percent of the kids that would be driving would be ten student drivers. Thank you for your commitment to addressing the needs of our community's youth. I look forward to working together to find solutions to support all students.
Thank you. Okay. All right, up next, we have Brianna. Is there Brianna? Okay. Okay. Dr. Jones? And Louise, I believe you all are gonna do three minutes apiece, is what I was told. Okay, so you might wanna be up there with her if you want to. So, when she finishes, okay? Go ahead, Dr. Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Coleman and Councilmembers. I'm Diana Jones, Superintendent of the Alamosa School District. I am here this evening to discuss the conditions proposed by the Planning Commission, the consequences of such conditions, and potential alternatives. When I became aware of the seven-hundred main building, it was clear to me that this property would meet several of our district needs. Since the pandemic, the Alamosa School District has lost enrollment. Frankly, having more space for alternative campus would allow us to increase the enrollment and ultimately increase funding for our district. It seemed like a perfect plan. I was totally surprised by the Planning Commission's proposal to cap the school's enrollment. As a district, we would appreciate no enrollment cap on our alternative school, but if council feels strongly about it, then we would ask that it is set to at least one hundred alternative students. While I understand the worry about parking, other entities have been granted leeway to utilize parking spaces tied to, tied to other properties that they own across the city. We'd appreciate the same consideration if we ever get to a point of running out of parking spaces. I originally offered to have a store onsite as it seamlessly works into our career technology education and meets workforce readiness needs. We are excited about the potential learning and workforce experiences for our students. At this time, as a district, we have not had a chance to discuss, work with the Colorado Department of Education representatives, meet with our staff, nor our students to plan for programming and outcomes that meet workforce readiness standards and requirements for certification. By requiring a storefront in perpetuity, which we all know is forever, it actually limits our students for their future career positions and our partnership with our local higher education institutions. I'm excited to quickly provide a store with Moose Swag and potentially swag from Trinidad State and Adam State because those workforce skills meet the current, current, the current career technology education standards. However, I do not know what those standards will look like in ten or twenty years or beyond. I ask that we be treated as other occupants of the downtown area have been treated. To my knowledge, no other occupant has been required to take fifteen hundred square feet of their space and been instructed what to do with that space. While we acknowledge and appreciate the brainstorming of the planning commissioners, with due respect, I remind you that we are the educators. We are the experts in student learning and experiences. Please consider our request to afford us the opportunity to grow and expand our collaboration and services provided as needs change. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, and we're gonna wait and restart, give you a fresh three minutes, Dr. Moreau.
I'll start on slide three.
Okay. Okay, good.
The recommendation from the Downtown Planning Committee is to have a storefront of fifteen hundred square feet as we propose the idea of having, as Dr. Jones stated, the Moose Swag Store. We strongly believe in creating pathways and opportunities to design experiences that combine academic learning with hands-on experiences. Next slide, please. Our profile of a graduate states, states that by the time students graduate from our school system, they will be resilient, locally and globally connected, future-ready, and confident. Next slide, please. We also strongly believe in Career and Technical Education, or CTE, which are programs designed to equip students with practical skills and knowledge in the fields like healthcare, information technology, manufacturing, and trades like automotive repair, making students job-ready upon graduation. CTE serves as the bridge between education and the workforce, helping students explore career options, gain valuable skills, and often earn credentials that lead directly to employment or further education in their chosen field. We not only envision having a student-managed store, but we also envision furthering our partnership with ASU, TSC, the City of Alamosa, and the Chamber of Commerce by imagining what some other communities call an incubation station, where students are in a prime location, which would be our downtown Alamosa, and have the space to foster their entrepreneurship skills. We not only want to be consumers, we also want to be contributors to a thriving Alamosa downtown. Next slide, please. We also wanna be trusted to deliver on our vision for Alamosa schools. We asked to, we asked to lift the fifteen hundred square feet condition recommended by the Planning Commission and allow us to design the best space for our students within the current layout of the building. This would also help to create a space where safety continues to be our number-one priority as allowing patrons into our space will pose challenges we will need to work through. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Up next, we have Amy. Okay, Elise?
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak a little bit about the Low Barrier Shelter. As you deliberate your vote on this later in the evening, I would like to remind you of a couple of things. First, a list of values that are on your Mission, Vision, and Values page on your city website. Here's the list. Transparency, compassion, inclusiveness, sustainable, stewardship, responsive, service-oriented, collaborative, and diversity. And second, a couple of excerpts from a proclamation you made nearly, well, it was over a year ago. Whereas the City Council of Alamosa, Colorado wants Alamosa to be a community of goodwill, civility, respect, and cooperation. And whereas the message behind the story of Tom Tate of Anaheim, California was also instrumental in wishing this proclamation be made as he has tapped into the power of kindness to create civic structures and service initiatives that made his community safer, healthier, and more connected. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the City Council of Alamosa, Colorado, do hereby proclaim October eighteen, two thousand twenty-three as a day of kindness. I use the word deliberate, deliberately, in the beginning of my few words because I don't think that this matter of building this low-barrier shelter has been discussed as thoroughly as it needs to be. And I would respectively request that you table the matter and enter into a, a really in-depth conversation about it at a future time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lance?
Hi, everybody. You wanna start with some gratitude here, you know, you know, I have a lot of gratitude for what the city has done for La Puente and for our homeless. I mean, Horizon Heights, we're placing people there. It's a beautiful project, there's a lot of people talking about it. We got a grant from you for, for the food bank, for services at the food bank. We got a grant from you for our employment program. I'm grateful also for the courage to establish St. Ben's. It was a very risky thing in many ways, and we hope that it can continue to be a service that really benefits folks, but that was a real risk that everyone took here. Getting us co-responders and getting the funding for that, that have become partners in our work, fabulous. It's a really good asset to our community, supportive lead. Our food bank building also got a facade grant from you, you guys do so much. Heather, you are taking the lead on cleaning that camp, and you yourself spent a lot of time out there and recruiting and getting to know people out there. You also did a wonderful education effort. And Chief Dingfelder, you know, I know that you put your, yourself at risk at all the time, that there's, as does the, the rest of your crew and your swift and professional support that needs at the shelter. And I'm grateful that you, we were offered the possibility to build a soup kitchen out at St. Ben's. I think as folks know, we already have a soup kitchen, and so our sense of just replicating something was there, really needed something more. On cold nights like tonight, we, we looked at the possibility of, maybe we could do a cold-weather shelter out there. Since those two years, we've made some efforts in the community to try to implement that in the community, and it's really hard. The behavioral health needs, the logistical needs, and just getting people to show up for those two to three days was really difficult, and we learned a lot. We pursued the thought of funding something that could go for three to four months, and no one's gonna fund something for three to four months. No one's gonna pick a job that requires such high skills for three to four months and then, then get a job elsewhere, you know? So, our only option was to counterpropose the, the city considering a low-barrier shelter that would be year-round, that would be more sustainable, that would meet the needs, that we, the needs in a greater way. That was not what you guys understood was the offer, and I understand that, and that was the counterproposal. There currently are a hundred and forty-two unhoused individuals at Alamosa today, and nearly a hundred of them will be sleeping outside tonight. So, perhaps the soil needs to be cultivated so that the future could have this possibility. I'm not gonna throw the plan away, I'm gonna keep it on the shelf and wait for all of us to find a time when we can really work together to make that happen. Again, thank you for all you have done for us.
Thank you. Wade?
Good evening. My name is Wade Price, I live at eighty-five forty-four County Road Four South. I run two businesses within the city limits. Thanks for the opportunity to voice my concerns. I'm against La Puente creating a new homeless shelter, and this is why. I feel as though the original intentions that is La Puente were pure, but I feel the business model has changed to purely monetary gain. Nonprofit or, or nonprofit organization doesn't mean the shareholders can't take money. In any other business, if we failed so many people and put them in a life-threatening environment, we would no longer be in business. I feel like success is reducing a problem, not making it worse. The homeless numbers continue to grow, so truly helping people is not helping. The monetary support from the city on the surface is not massively significant, but the hidden costs are mounting. I'm sure the fence built at the homeless camp was close to fifty grand. I'm familiar with the costs because we spent a hundred grand to build our fence to keep them out and the deer. In my mind, La Puente should receive no funding, but instead help carry the burden that their business creates in the same way that any other business would have to pay for their own damages. Some of these financial burdens are seen with the extra city employees to clean up stuff, medical assistance that when they're ODing, damages to city structures that the city guys are having to fix, and the need for extra police presence, which we see constantly at Sunset Park. And that park was built for the community on taxpayer dollars and has the bathrooms locked and the dugouts fenced in due to the numerous police calls. Building homeless camps to get them out of the town, to change the perception that there is no problem? It's time to quit importing people from, to our community and start rehabilitating the ones we do have here. We have witnessed people that were given one-way tickets from Denver to Alamosa. This happened in twenty nineteen. The couple at that time didn't look too bad. I saw the male just the other day, and he looked pretty rough, pretty ragged. So, he's not doing better. Visitors to Alamosa have voiced their concerns that they don't feel comfortable staying more than one night in Alamosa. This is at the RV park. They say this doesn't look like a safe town. We're just gonna do one night and move on. As a community and a city council, we need to turn the corner.
Thank you very much. Merritt?
Good evening, council. I sent you guys a letter a week ago. I just felt it was important for the face-to-face. You know where I, what I feel about it? I do not feel it's a good idea. I just felt it was important to be face-to-face with you instead of just an email. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Amy?
Hi, everyone, Amy Canugie, I live at Twelve River Drive in Alamosa. I am a board member of La Puente. I don't, I don't speak for La Puente, I'm just speaking for myself. The, the cold-weather shelter was discussed as a board, and everybody would have loved to have partnered with the city on that. But as an employer, I, I manage a farm up in Center. It's just so hard to get good help and to keep good help, and we really felt that there was no way we were gonna be able to staff it and do a good job when it was just gonna be a few months, a year. So, I don't want you to think that there was any other impediments other than that in La Puente wanting to partner with the city on this. It just, it just wasn't gonna be feasible to do it and do it well. But if there's other projects that we can partner with the city in the future, of course, you know, we would want to. You know, I thought it was so ironic, driving over here tonight with all the snow and the cold weather, and homelessness is a problem everywhere, not just in Alamosa or the San Luis Valley. I, I see it so much up in Colorado Springs and Denver and other places. It's, this is not unique to our little town here that this, this problem is happening. And it would be really nice to be able to have people be safe and in a place where they could be connected with services and get back on their feet. So, I just thank you for your time, and if there's anything that we can work together on, we would be open to that, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brianna?
Hi, my name is Brianna Martinez. I'm a student at the Alamosa Alternative School. I think moving forward in the alt-ed education system, we need this bigger building and more space for more students that come from a broken home, just like I did. There are students that don't know better and that don't care for their education or their future, nor have any goals for themselves. And I think every young adult deserves a second chance at life, life and education in general. On a personal note, when I first came to this school, I came lost, not wanting a future, not wanting an education, just wanting to give up on school and in life in general. But being in the school has opened my eyes to so much more and shown me that I'm much more than just giving up. It was always my teachers that stayed right by my side, pushing me to fight for my future and my dreams. When I look at my school, I see a family that has been built around all stu-, all these students that got left behind. Last year, I got the opportunity to get my school a grant for eleven thousand dollars. And with that money, we are planning to get a washer, dryer, shower, and hygiene station for students in need. With the leftover money, we are wanting to get a miniature greenhouse to be able to grow our own veggies, plants, fruits, to decorate our new school and to be able to bring our new school to life with colors and joy. The system has failed these students many times in life, and it would break my heart to see the school district failing them as well just for the simple fact that we can't take in many, many students in our small facility. We are all human, just trying to, trying to survive in this crazy thing we all call life. Everyone messes up in life, and me and my fellow students are just trying to prove everyone wrong. We would like the cap of seventy-five to be lifted to support all students who need extra help, at least a hundred students. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, council, the last comment card before we go to Zoom. We have Gloria, and Gloria has a translator. So, Gloria, if you and your translator would like to come up to the mic. Since we do have a translator, I'm going to duplicate the three minutes to six minutes, so it's fair, okay? Because the translator's gonna have to translate what she's saying, so.
Good evening, I am Gloria Solis, member of the school board for the District of Alamosa. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to express the importance that this collaboration brings to our community to be able to better the schools in Alamosa, just like our city. Since we know that these successes are just the same successes and vice versa, and unity is strength. I work as a school teacher, preschool school, school teacher, as an, and as an educator in education for the students, which not only depends on the instruction of a teacher, but it is also a partnership of different aspects which gen-, which generate a successful educational system. The infrastructure of the buildings is something that is essential since the school buildings and spaces need to be adequate and apt for the learning environment. Having spaces with dignity and that are secure for every student and for all of the workers is something that's a great focus for our district.
Thank you.
The United States is a worldwide superpower, and our schools ought to be up to the level of not only our country, but also the shared vision that we have in Alamosa. I ask you to please consider these petitions from our administration and to continue working in partnership to be able to provide a better education for all of our students within our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're at a comment card, so we're gonna go to the Zoom participants. Ms. Martinez, if you don't mind, could you please share with the Zoom participants how to raise their hand so they can be recognized?
Yes, sir, if you're on the Zoom app and you wanna speak for public comment, you'll use the raise-hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine. I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand, mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez, I don't see any hands raised either. So, we'll turn everything back over to staff for follow-up.
Mayor, I believe the items that were addressed tonight are later on the agenda and more
and more information will be presented at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Up next is ceremonial items. Introduction of a patrol officer. Leave. All right. Coming up.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to introduce one of our newest officers, Damon Martinez. A little bit about Damon. He was born in Arizona, came to the valley when he was 10 years old, has been here since. Law enforcement hasn't always been in the family. It's something new to the family. Two years ago, his mother and his cousin, I believe, attended our local police academy. And since then, they have gone on to have a career with Adams State University and Alamos County Sheriff's Office. Damon and his older sister joined the police academy last year. And I've had the pleasure of teaching them for nine months in the academy. Damon quickly established himself within the class as somebody they could count on. He was voted in as their class leader. We hired him in January as an apprentice. And during the apprentice program, that's where they're kind of exposed to the day-to-day life of law enforcement. They learn our geography, learn how to use the radio, graduated in May, and then started the FTO program in June. In October, Damon graduated the, or completed the FTO program and has since been serving the community. Damon does have two younger brothers in elementary school, one younger sister in high school, and then again, his older sister, who he did go through the police academy with last year, and we just recently brought on to our department as well. She's currently going through the FTO program. So hopefully in a few months, we'll introduce her to you guys. But with that being said, it's my pleasure to introduce Damon Martinez as our newest officer.
All right.
I just want to say thank you to the department, and I look forward to serving and protecting now.
Thank you, Damon. I'll see if any council members would like to make any comments. Anybody? Councilor Dominguez?
Welcome to the team.
So anybody else? I'll wrap things up. I think I remember going to your graduation, seeing you and your sister. Yep, yep. Well, glad to have you on our team. Look forward to you making a difference in our community, and we wish you much success.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Take care. All right. And the co-responder introduction?
Good evening, council. Mayor Coleman, it's my pleasure to introduce to you guys May Mercadante. She's a 2013 graduate of Adams State University Counselor Education Department. And in her words, "May is proud to serve the Alamosa community as a co-responder with the Alamos Police Department, where she has the unique opportunity to apply her skills developed through years of public-facing work." In her role, May provides critical support in crisis situations, helping individuals in need while working alongside law enforcement to strengthen our community's safety and well-being. Her dedication, compassion, and professionalism make her an invaluable asset to the Alamos Police Department. May, thank you for your service and all that you do for our community. May Mercadante.
Thanks. Happy to be here.
You had a sharp punch tonight. Okay. It's all right. So what we'll do is we'll turn it over to council for any comments. Councilor Yan V. Hill and Councilor Krebs?
Welcome to the team, May.
Thanks, Yan.
You're gonna be a great asset for that group. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm so glad you're here.
Thanks, Don.
Okay. No other mics. I'll just close things out. Co-responder program is having a lot of success in the valley, and it's a model for other agencies like ours across the nation. Really proud of you joining the team, and I'm quite sure you're gonna make a huge difference. So I wish you the best.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Up next, Fire Department introductions.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for having us here this evening. I'd like to introduce, we've got seven new firefighters. I believe we only have six of us right now, I think maybe due to weather and whatnot. Three of these firefighters are from our Explorer Academy, and the others have, quite a few of them started about several months ago, but we wanted to get everybody at the same time. So just wanted to let you know about that. Many of these folks have gone through the Ignacio State Firefighter Course, and that was a couple of days they spent there. And perhaps they could shed a little bit of light on that. And I noticed that the police officers talked about their folks in detail. I've got six people to talk about in detail, and I don't think I'm gonna be able to keep up. So I'll have each of them just come up and just say a little bit about themselves. So I'll just read through the list first, and then I'll follow through. So we got Michael Elchew, Josh Klein, Soraya Lopez, Jerick Martinez, Pedro de Pedro Pablo, the greatest name ever, Denise Velarde, and Christian Wolfe. So if we could get Michael on up here, and he'll just introduce himself and tell you a little bit about where he's from.
Okay. Sounds good.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Mike. I've been with the department for just about a couple of months now, full-time with Rogers Mortuary. That's my professional career, so I'm wearing a little bit different uniform today. But I look forward to serving the community in both aspects, all the way around, and providing services as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next up is Soraya Lopez.
Hello. I'm, oh, sorry. I'm Soraya Lopez, and I've been with the Fire Department for almost a year now in December. And I really enjoy working with the Fire Department and helping as possible, like helping with everything. And I'm really loving it, and I'm really looking forward to it. So nice to meet you guys.
Thank you, Soraya.
Next up, Jerick Martinez.
So my name's Jerick Martinez. I've been on since September, but I was previously in the Explorer Program, which was, I don't even know how long it was, but we got previous experience before actually joining the program. So I'm looking forward to a long career in this. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jerick.
Next up, Pedro de Pedro Pablo.
Hello. My name is Pedro de Pedro Pablo. Been with the Fire Department almost a year here in December. I also worked for the Alamos Police Department as the Community Service Officer. I decided to join the Fire Department to help out the community more, so that's why I'm here.
Awesome, Pedro. Thank you.
Denise Velarde?
Hi, everyone. Sorry. My name's Denise. I've been on the department for about a year already. So far, I love it. Nice meeting you, council, and I don't have very much to say right now, but I love it.
Thank you, Denise.
And lastly, Christian Wolfe?
Hi, I'm Christian Wolfe. I've been on the department for about six months. I am grateful for the opportunities it has given me, getting into the Explorer Program, which led to me getting on the department. And I hope to make it a life career. And so I am very thankful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay. Chief, I'm gonna open it up to council if it's okay to see if they would like to make any comments. Is that okay? Or did you have anything else you want to say? Okay. Any one, Councilor Dominguez, and then Councilor Jackie V. Hill?
Congratulations, guys, on your new endeavor. We need you so many critical times, especially during the winter. Stay safe out there.
Just want to say thank you for all you do. It's needed in our community. And for, it's nice to hear that everyone is loving what they do.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. I'll wrap things up. I'm really overjoyed to see you all up here, especially the ones who graduated from the Explorer Academy recently. So I got a chance to have dinner with you all. And to see you a part of the Fire Department is huge. And then for those of you who recently joined this past year, just so thankful and grateful for you joining our team and looking forward to you all having a lot of success in your career. So keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your support.
Awesome. Okay. Council, that brings us to the next item, Consent Calendar A. Councilor Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A, knowing that C1A has been brought down to under Development Services.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? No? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next on the agenda, under Regular Business, we have Planning Commission's Annual Update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me today to give you an update on what we've been up to. We've been doing a number of things. But before I get started, I just wanted to just say a few words. There were that you, you already know, I'm just preaching the choir here, but I just wanted to let you know that the Planning Commission couldn't do what we do if we didn't have the most incredible staff that works for the city, that's done a number of things with Deacon, Rachel, Nicole, and the other, the other staff members do an incredible job. They've taken the Planning Commission to a place that I haven't seen in my 10-plus years of being on it. And it's well-organized. We move forward. It's well-prepared and well-done. And just wanted to let you know that, how appreciative I am and the other members are of Deacon and Rachel and their entire staff. So I just wanted to let you know that. Also wanted to kind of call out Captain Zed Mestus. I know he's gonna be moving. I'd like to say that your loss is our gain, as I am with Adams State University. But he's done an incredible job since we brought him on to the Planning Commission. For years, we've never really had anyone represent the code as a code officer. And when we asked Deacon to start adding somebody, because we were getting a lot of requests from the community or concerns about code, and Deacon brought Sam on, and he's been here ever since, to speak on behalf of code. And our numbers of complaints have completely almost gone away because of, they were willing to listen, the needs of code officers, the needs of the community. And it's been a really good relationship. And with Sam leaving, I hope we're able to continue to have that relationship, you know, at that part of our meeting. It's one of our meeting things. What have we been doing this past year? As usual, we do the annual three-mile annexation plan discussion. We have monthly, again, monthly code updates. It was from Captain Messus and discussions in regard to those concerned areas. We've had one variance request, one conforming, to conforming use, one conditional use permit, and one administrative appeal that we saw during this last year. We've had two meetings that we dove deep into the Dark Skies Initiative. A lot of good conversations and a lot of understanding and updates of what that would look like for our community. We had a code discussion on natural medicines, the downtown code amendments. And we had a special meeting on the school use in the central business district. We also discussed the levy recertification process and the development updates around that, as well as, we also implemented, Deacon implemented, staff updates so that we wouldn't have to go around saying, hey, what's going on in the community? After, at the end of each meeting, they bring up updates of what's going on in the community, what we might be seeing in the future, just so that we can be apprised to what's going on in our community. And then, and the final thing is, we also implemented that the PC Chair would meet with staff once a month to kind of talk about any concerns, issues, or what's happening. We have a really good group, and we take our role seriously. We're volunteers, but we take our commission very seriously in what we do. So I really appreciate your support. I appreciate you having us, you know, do what we do. There was a big change when the UDC changed, and it changed our identity and what we did. And we questioned sometimes what our role was and the purpose. And Deacon and Rachel have been able to come in there and show us our role and reshape our role. And we really feel like we do have a voice and we do represent our community. So I want to thank you for that.
If you're done, I want to make sure I open it up for council, Mark, to ask you questions. If that is, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good. So anyone who would like to make any questions to Mark, feel free to. Councilor Hensley?
So I think it's awesome. I remember you and I having a discussion. I don't remember when it was in regards to those changes and that concern in regards to the role change of, was it even necessary? And obviously, it's shown how important it is to have the committee. And I just appreciate your open-mindedness, as well as the rest of the team, in regards to adjusting as changes happen here, just like anything else. And so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
So I don't see any other lights on, so I'll wrap things up. Mark, I want to thank you and your team, and you all put a lot of work into the tough decisions that you all have to make. And your roles are so crucial and important for the integrity of what we do in our community. And I'm just so thankful for the time that you all invest into the work that you're doing to protect our community and make sure that we have certain codes that are followed or in place so that we're more uniform and fair with all people who come through the city of Alamosa. So thank you so very much, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, under Development Services, Public Hearing and Second Reading for Ordinance Number 27-2024, and Ordinance Amending the Unified Development Code for Respect to Lighting, with respect to lighting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It has been a very long road to get to tonight. I know it's not the most exciting item on the agenda, but it took a lot of, a lot of community outreach and a lot of staff time and a lot of effort by our community partners to get to the point where we're proposing the Second Reading and Public Hearing for what is essentially the Dark Sky Ordinance. So tonight, we're adopting some regulations that will strike a balance between what Dark Sky International would like us to do so that they can approve the Senator Cristo Dark Sky Reserve and what our constituents are comfortable in terms of lighting regulations. So we really do feel that between work sessions with council and public outreach and the first reading, that what we're presenting this evening is reasonable, enforceable, and is the right fit for Alamosa. It protects our dark skies. It gives the possibility, it opens the door that they may, the reserve may move forward, even though it's not a guarantee. But it's also fair to our business owners, fair to our homeowners, and reasonable expectation of compliance and support throughout our community. So I'm here if there are any questions.
Okay. So what we'll do, Ms. James, is we'll go ahead and open up the Public Hearing and Second Reading for Ordinance Number 27-2024, and Ordinance Amending the Unified Development Code with respect to lighting. If anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments regarding this issue during this hearing, this is the time to do so. this is the time to do so. Feel free to come up to the mic and, uh, make your comments. Okay, I don't see anybody in the audience coming, so I'll go ahead and move to our Zoom participants. Thank you. Uh, if you're on Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature on your screen to raise your hand so that you can be recognized if you would like to make any comments in this public hearing. I see one hand raised, Ms. Martinez, uh, is ALM, BGC, SLV. So if you're that, there you go. You can start talking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. This is Aaron Montberger. Um, I really appreciate the work that the city has done with the Planning Commission, um, and SLV Go to take leadership on this dark skies, um, uh, policy change. I think it is in the best interest of the goals of the city, and I just wanted to say that I fully support it. So thank you for the work on that.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to make any comments at this time before we close the public hearing? Once we close the public hearing, we will not take any other comments. Okay, Ms. Martinez, I don't see any other hands raised, so I am going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to Counsel. Counsel Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve on Second Reading, Ordinance Number 7, 27 dash 2024.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
There are two versions, so which version would you be moving for?
I believe the motion at the first reading was to move forward with the non-strict version, not the DSI-approved version.
Okay.
Approve version A, the less strict version, which we approved on first reading.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Counsel for clarification. Okay, motion second, no further discussion. Please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. James. The next item on the agenda, Public Hearing and Second Reading for Ordinance Number 29 dash 2024, and Ordinance Amending 10 dash 28 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Alamosa to eliminate the distance restriction for alternative secondary schools and online schools for any campus in the Central District, Business District.
I will clarify on the onset, so I do not forget, there are two ordinance, uh, proposed here this evening. So this is a request that comes from the School District. Um, it is tied to the other ordinance we'll be evaluating this evening that it will allow educational uses if approved by the, by Council in our Central Business District. There is a rule by state statute that there are distances required between liquor licenses and educational uses. And so this evening, um, at the request of the School District, we are here to present removing those distance requirements. So the two ordinances that you have the opportunity to approve, one removes all distance requirements from any liquor licenses in the Central Business District. The other ordinance removes them for everything except for liquor stores, which are allowed by code. Um, liquor law is a little bit more complicated than that, and the city clerk or the city attorney can explain some of those nuances. But the gist of it is, in order to allow an educational use in our downtown, um, we would have to lift this distance requirement, or we wouldn't be allowed to issue any more liquor licenses for restaurants or hotels. And that goes against what we're hoping for the vibrancy of our downtown. Um, but if we lift it, as the School District has requested, that's no longer a conflict. Um, but Counselor Hensley did bring up at our first reading that she would like us to look at excluding liquor stores from the restriction lifting. So I am again here for questions.
Okay, we'll come back to you with questions. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the Second Reading and Ordinance Number 29, 2024, and Ordinance Amending Section 10 dash 28, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to eliminate the distance restriction for alternative secondary schools and online schools for any campus in the Central Business District. If you are in the audience and you would like to make any comments, uh, regarding this matter, please come up to the podium and make your comments at this time. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience. Um, so I am going to go to Zoom. If you're on Zoom and you would like to make comments in regards to this hearing, uh, this is the time to do so. Use the Raise Your Hand feature, uh, to be recognized. And, um, I see, Aaron, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. Uh, what, once again, I, I spoke the last time that this was before you all, before it was moved on the Second Reading. I think it is important for Counsel to know that, um, this is something that the Main Street Advisory Group, um, was pretty split on, um, but ultimately, I, I think it is in the best interest of the vibrancy of our downtown. It's in the best interest, long-term, for our School District. Um, and I really want to commend staff for the compromises that they were able to make and the Planning Commission for their suggestions. Um, I would fully recommend that the Counsel approve on Second Reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, if you're on Zoom and you would like to raise your hand to be recognized, to make comments, uh, in this public hearing, please raise your hand. Once we close this Zoom, um, opportunity, we will come back to Counsel to, uh, move forward. I don't see any hands raised, Ms. Martinez.
I don't either, Mayor.
I'll go ahead and close this public hearing and bring it back to Counsel for comments, questions, or motions. Counselor, uh, Hensley?
All right, so I'll go ahead and move that we adopt Ordinance Number 29 dash 2024. I'm not seen on here, but with it, with the amendment or the exception of liquor stores. Is that how we're stating that?
Uh, yes, and the way it's written, it's actually liquor stores, wholesale, uh, licenses, which are actually not allowed in the CBD anyway, um, because they're considered light industry and liquor licensed drugstores.
So it's those packaged that you can carry out?
Yep, I see it now. So that way.
Okay, Counsel Carson?
I was just looking for clarification there too. So we're eliminating that from downtown, period, or?
So the version, um, I think Counselor Hensley is making a motion on would keep the distance requirements for those, for a drugstore, which means if a drugstore were able to come in because of other stuff, this would prevent it from coming in, a, a, a liquor store.
Good. Okay, all right, we have a motion. I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Think we're missing, oh, there we go. Thank you. Ms. Martinez? I think it's six with one.
Okay, so the motion passed six to one with Counselor Carson casting the no vote.
Yes. Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Public Hearing and Second Reading for Ordinance Number 30 dash 2024, and Ordinance Amending the Unified Development Code to allow schools in the Central Business District by conditional use with certain limitations.
So I opened the first reading by saying this same line, so Counsel's already heard it. But our UDC is a document that is a living, breathing document. It changes with the times. And so the reason that we're here to discuss a change to the UDC is because the School District is interested in purchasing 700 Main Street, the old Friday Health Building. And so there is, um, another item on the agenda where we will discuss the conditional use permit itself. And so we had, uh, we requested Counsel pull it, um, from Consent Agenda for the ratification because it technically wasn't part of the code and won't be part of the code unless it's approved during this, this ordinance. So this ordinance proposes to allow educational uses in the Central Business District as a conditional use. A conditional use is a very rarely used tool in our development code. So the last time we did one was in 2020. And they're special because it's, um, it's like, uh, a very, it's like a surgical tool, you know? Instead of the broad approval that we do for a lot of land use things, this allows Planning Commission to really dig in and decide exactly how to allow sort of an unusual use in a certain zone district. It's a use that doesn't happen very often. Um, and how can we limit the negative effects of that use on the rest of the zone district? So it allows things that aren't usually allowed, but only with conditions. And so during the work session we had with Counsel, Counsel also supported it being a conditional use. And so overall, what this amendment proposes is, yes, we will allow schools in our Central Business District, in our downtown. Um, obviously, we had to deal with the liquor issue, which is resolved, but that we would also like a little bit of control over it. You know, we would like to be able to say, you know, this or that, or, or whatever can satisfy some of the issues that we think could come up, putting a school in a downtown. And it's just because they're uses that don't usually go together. And I'm not specifically talking about Alamosa. I'm not talking about the School District. I'm not even talking about 700 Main Street. I'm talking about making a change to the entire code and opening up the entire code to educational uses in our downtown. And so that, that's why it's proposed as a conditional use. That is the change that's being proposed for the UDC that will stand in perpetuity until it's changed. Um, the only other thing is that we are effectively treating this category as if it's an office use. And we're also deciding, um, recommending to Counsel that, uh, maybe high school age students are above. So you wouldn't have like an elementary school use in the downtown. But that really, high school students and older are, are a lot like office use, you know? They go down, they shop, they buy coffee, they, you know, do the kind of things that adults do. Um, and then beyond that, uh, we could discuss it a little bit further in the conditional use permit from the School District. But we, we did purposefully discuss middle school students in our novice communication to Counsel. We believe there will be some middle school students associated with the use at 700 Main Street, but we've been told that it's, it's such a small number of students that we don't really consider it to be an impact, and it would be online students just coming in for tutoring. So again, those are the, those are the barriers, is that you have to have a conditional use permit to have an education use in the downtown, has to be high, high school age students or older, um, and it has to be more or less like an office use. And that is my presentation.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and open up the Public Hearing and Second Reading for Ordinance Number 30, 2024, and Ordinance Amending the Unified Development Code to allow schools in the Central Business District by conditional use and certain limitations. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium to make any comments, uh, during this hearing, uh, please do so now. Okay. I don't see anyone coming to the podium from the audience, so we'll go ahead and move to the Zoom participants. If you're on Zoom and you would like to be recognized, please use the Raise Your Hand feature on your computer so that we can, uh, recognize you and give you an opportunity to talk during this public hearing. I see, Aaron, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. Um, I, I want to start by saying I really appreciate the comments that were made during Public Comment Section of this meeting by students, by staff, by administration, and by board members. I think those were, um, powerful testaments to the work of Alamosa School District and its place in our community overall. I also want to commend staff, the Planning Commission, and the city for working together to come up with such, um, thoughtful and innovative ways to make sure that we are integrating the School District in, um, our community. And in this specific situation, making best use of a building, um, that potentially could have, uh, sat vacant for a long period of time. And we've seen that happen before, um, like with the courthouse that is just being renovated now, and it, and it isn't good for a healthy community to have large buildings downtown sitting vacant for a long period of time. I think that, uh, the Main Street Advisory Committee would really like to see, um, a vibrant downtown. And I know that we went back and forth about what that looks like. Uh, but the, the work of the, um, the city and, and Main Street and the Planning Commission over the past several years has created, uh, a very full, um, and vibrant downtown. And, and I think, um, the next step is really looking to relax some of those rules to make sure that we're making best use of the resources that we have available. Um, and this was a hard one. I, I think this was, um, a hard building to fill otherwise. I really appreciate the creative use of the district. And I know that it's, um, gonna take some conditional use and, and bending some of those rules. But it's, it's really been thought out well, so I would urge Counsel to please pass on Second Reading, um, th- this, uh, conditional use as well.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, if you're on Zoom and you would like to make any comments during this public hearing, now is the, uh, next time to, well, Matthew? Abby?
Hello, can you hear me?
Little bit louder.
Hello, can you hear me, Mayor?
Now I can, yes.
All right, thanks. Hey, I want to, uh, thank the Counsel for, and particularly the city staff for the work they've done with the district, um, on the Friday's building, 700 Main Street. I think that some of the areas where the School District and, uh, and the city have come together to try and find a path through, show some, uh, show some collaboration that, um, to Aaron's points, puts, uh, puts a building that would be hard to fill to use, um, while still, uh, respecting and attempting to uphold the planning that has gone on for so long to bring vibrancy to downtown. Um, Aaron's right, there, there's some divided opinions on the Main Street Advisory Committee about, you know, which direction to go. I, I think a good middle road, um, has been found here. Um, I did note, reading some of the, the documentation and correspondence from the School District, that while they're willing to do some retail, uh, sidewalk, Main Street-facing retail within the next five years, um, they don't have any funding for it. So, uh, I would suggest that the Counsel give some thought to, um, how to make that happen so that we don't end up with another contentious debate in five years where the city will be bound to, um, enforce the agreement. Uh, otherwise, good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if you're on Zoom and you would like to be recognized to make comments, now is the time to raise your hand so you can be recognized.
Sorry, everybody.
Okay, this is the last time I'll make this comment. Okay, all right, Counsel, I'm turning this back over to, uh, to you for any follow-up questions to, uh, Ms. James and comments. Counsel Yan V. Hill?
Just a quick comment, I think.
And then Counsel Carson, sorry.
I appreciate this because it gives, um, it gives the city some protections and some safeguards for the future if another school wants to come down here, that we have tools in the toolbox to handle that, being that this is such a new and unique situation. So I'm, I'm looking forward to having a conversation on the next agenda item.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Yan V. Hill. Counsel Carson?
Um, so, I, I, I'm a little confused. I, so we, we're being asked to approve this with two changes, which is 100-student cap and then the 1,500.
That's a different agenda item. So, so that's the next item that it's the Planning Commission's recommendations for the special use permit. This is changing the code to allow an educational use as a conditional use in the Central Business District.
Okay, well, to that point, um, I, I feel like we do, we do make changes and accommodations to different entities in, in situations like this. It was commented earlier that it feels like, like we're treating you guys differently. I don't feel we are at all. In, in a sense, from where I sit, I feel like we're being treated differently because, um, it's almost like this is a done deal. And like I said before the other night, I just feel like the, the re- again, in going back to the retail space, I don't think that's a huge deal. And I think in the grand scheme of $8 million, that's pretty doable. And that was my only beef with that, or even my only issue, so I'll, I'll be making that comment again later. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Carson.
Mayor, I move that we approve on Second Reading, Ordinance Number 30 dash 2024.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. We're missing one. Good, all right.
The motion carried unanimously.
Good, good. Okay, so we moved another item off of the front under Consent Items. It was, uh, C1 Ratification of Planning Commission's Approval Conditional Use Permit for Educational Use at 700 Main. And...
I promise this is my last item. So this is the conditional use permit that we've So this is the conditional use permit that we've danced around the last two ordinances. So generally, this is something that is just on the consent agenda and is ratified by council. So if you go to the first slide, please. So the reason we're here this evening is that Alamosa School District has applied for a conditional use permit at seven hundred Main Street, which is the old Friday Health Building at the corner of San Juan and Main. They'd like to move their administration offices, their alternative education school and their online school to this location. Next, please. Okay, so conditional use permit overview, I touched on this a little bit earlier. But they are a very unique and special tool in our code. So they are allowing a use that is almost never allowed in that zone district. As I said, we haven't had one since twenty twenty and we have them very, very rarely before that. They're approved by the planning commission. So the public hearing itself, where a public comment actually happens at the planning commission. And then they make the conditions and they make a recommendation, or really, they make the decision. And then the decision is ratified by council. And so the reason that conditions are so important is much like Councilor V Hill just said, that they provide certain protections, both for the applicant applying for a conditional use permit and also for the school district. So Planning Commission really carefully crafts these conditions. There are some recommendations from staff, but generally, it's it's part of a discussion with the planning commission specifically. So when you ratify their decision, you can decide to either just approve it as part of your consent agenda or you can do what you did this evening, which is you pull it from the agenda, which requires a majority vote, which you did. Usually, you're not pulling it because the code changes haven't taken effect. That's not usually how it goes. Usually, you're pulling it because you want to make changes or discuss it or ask questions of staff. But tonight was kind of an unusual situation. But this evening, the one that you pulled, I think both is because the changes needed to happen to the code. But also because I think that council does have very specific questions about this conditional use in our downtown. So if there are any changes made to the conditions that were recommended by planning commission, you have to set it for another public hearing and the next available public hearing for city council would be November twentieth. So just make that really, really clear for the audience. So there are changes that were mentioned during public comment, and we'll go through those a little bit further in my presentation. But the wonderful and beautiful thing, much like the code, but the wonderful thing about a conditional use is that they can come back with additional data. So this is another thing that is living and breathing and can change. So they are welcome to go out and find some of the data that we need to help make these decisions and come back. So one of the things that's also interesting about this is because it's a brand new use, it's education in our central business district. None of us know how it's going to work out. This is an experiment. And so not only do they have the ability to go out, get more information, come back to planning commission and have an amendment to their conditional use. Say they wanted to change the student cap or say they wanted to change the square footage of the retail space. They could do either of those things by going out and finding more data. Maybe the data that we didn't have time to do during this process because it went so aggressively quickly. And then beyond that, if it doesn't quite work out and it turns out to be more disruptive or parking is more of an issue than we thought, we haven't just completely opened it up, you know, there there are some protections in place on both sides. And really, that's one of the wonderful things. We can change it. It's not that hard to change. They go back before planning commission, bring us new data, we'll happily look at it and it'll go back before council. And two, we don't know, we don't know how it's going to work out. So either it'll be great, no problems, keeps on going, they come back, we make changes, it's all beautiful. Or we say, hey, there's some issues, let's work on it, let's tighten up parking, let's let's talk about some of these things.
Ms. James, one second. Okay, Council V Hill, you were about to say something.
I had a question on exactly what she just said.
Okay.
Can I ask that real quick?
For clarification.
It's a clarified question, yeah. If there's issues, staff can go and ask for changes?
No, so the the school district can come back before planning commission and ask for changes.
But not the other way around?
No.
Okay.
Staff can't make changes.
Council Carson, you got your light on.
Are you done with your presentation?
No.
No, keep going.
Someday, I'll learn to make a two page presentation, I promise. Okay, next, please. It's only nine, I promise. Okay, conditions for Main Street, you've already heard these. Student enrollment is capped at seventy five students. We are not counting online students because they are not there most of the time. Two, five hundred square feet of leasable retail space along Main Street, five years after they get their certificate of occupancy. Next, please. Okay, condition number one, student enrollment. So much like I said, education is brand new. This is a, this is an experiment played out in the public scene. We believe and the planning commission really strongly believes that the cap helps us adjust to the impacts and see what they are because we really just don't know. And then more than anything else, and there's a reason I put it in bold, it helps parking. I'm not gonna drag any police officers up here. But really, they spent a lot of time on a weekly basis addressing the parking issues when Friday Health Plans was in that building. And I know that they were, you know, nearing maximum capacity, they were going to build another building. But Friday Health Plans really put a bad taste in all the downtown businesses' minds about about overusing parking because it's such a huge building, but it doesn't have much parking. Yes.
So to that point, I don't necessarily think, and this is just for that clarification, I don't think that's comparing apples to apples at all. Because keep in mind, you're dealing, you were dealing with a staff of grown adults who were driving to work, you know, hundreds of people versus young people who who most of them can't drive, don't have cars and it's a handful. So I just think that's not exactly the same.
It's on the next slide, I promise. I promise. Okay. We also, again, again, it is a maximum use. You're talking about adults that were all driving in a huge twenty thousand square foot building that was full of people. I agree, it was a different situation. And it was such an issue and because our codes matter and because parking counts matter, Friday Health Plans, to help solve that problem, they went out and spent a half million dollars to buy a parking lot. So the one that we helped, that where the, we helped pave and got a grant for and the one where the farmer's market is, Friday Health Plans had to do that because they did not meet our parking requirement. So us, us asking downtown businesses to find parking is not a new thing. I just want to clarify that. And then if we go to the next one, we get to do math together, which I know sounds really fun. So, Council Krabs gets it. Okay. So the code requires for office space, three, three spaces per one thousand square feet. Yes, that's a much higher bar to pass, right? And so the school district is only talking about using half of their building as office space, only the top floor. Education is one space per two students because our code takes into account, we don't think every student drives. The school district is saying that ten percent of their students drive. That's just not what our code says, and unfortunately, we're not parking experts. But we did talk to the school district when they told us they thought it was ten percent. And we said, hey, there's an off ramp in our code that allows you to go out and get a parking study. And if your parking study says that your students only use it, you know, only ten percent of students drive, then we will happily change the cap. But we just don't have the data to support it. It's not in our code, it's not what the code says, and we don't have the expertise to say that. They also have the possibility, and I think that their project manager in the district is looking into buying that parking lot from the, in the Friday Health Plans bankruptcy, the one that I spoke about earlier. So I think they're looking into that. And then again, the math is there, I'm joking, we won't actually do it together, but Deacon checked it, so I'm pretty sure it's accurate. So it's seventy five students is thirty seven and a half spaces, half of the buildings is thirty three point six spaces for office use, that's seventy one spaces. Their parking lot, I'm going to say plus or minus sixty four spaces because they could lay it out differently. But there's a limitation based on the minimum size of a parking stall that you can, there's limit on how many spaces you can fit in there. So they're already short seven spaces with the cap of seventy five students. So we're starting at a place where they're already short. Next, please. So leasable retail space. So we went back to the planning commission, talking about conditions. And it was very important to them to honor the recommendation that Councilor Carson came up with and that Councilor Krebs and Councilor Hensley had such good ideas about whether it's maker space or incubator space or or the, that discussion that came out of the planning commission or came out of the work session. That meant a lot to the planning commission and they put a lot of weight on what council wanted for that. We asked them at the planning commission hearing, how much time do you need to make this happen? And so the school district stood right here and they said, we'd at least need five years. But it was a dialogue and they said that they could achieve it in the amount of, that amount of time. It also really helps us honor the fact that, you know, this is a use, it doesn't totally jive with our downtown plan. So it helps respect the plan. I think it helps based on what, you know, our chairman of our Main Street Committee, Matt Abbey, just said during public comment. It helps satisfy some of their fears because it is adding like a retail use to the downtown, which is what they want to see. And then also, again, whether or not downtown is any different than any business anywhere else, it is usually the center of commerce. It is usually where your tourists are headed. So that's just the nature of downtowns and the nature of where shopping is, it's just a concentration of uses in a small space and that's why they attract people. And so this is a thing that kind of honors that, that says, hey, when you go downtown, you expect there to be a bunch of stores and a bunch of dining, all kind of close. And this also does that same thing. So one more. So fifteen hundred square feet for context, because it's a number and it's confusing. It's like seven, it's like six point seven percent of the building, it's a tiny amount of the building. And the school district provided that graphic, it shows the front of the building, I flipped it so it could fit on the slide. But that shows how much of the first floor would be the fifteen hundred square feet. They did, you know, they are lucky to have a a project manager on hand that says that doing that kind of remodel would be two hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars, which is a lot of money. And the school district will say right now, they just don't have it and we get it. And although we can't make it part of the condition and we can't single handedly do the lift, we are happy to partner with them to find funding to do it. We would happily find them grant funds to do the facade improvements and the retrofit retrofitting of the first floor so that they could have a retail use. We understand that this is part of being a good partner. If we want them to be good partners and have retail in the downtown, then we want to be good partners and help them get it done. So I think we're almost at the end. Yes, so the importance of the conditions. So I I realized that the school district came before you this evening and asked you to lift both or to reduce both. And and I understand from their perspective why they would ask that. But these code changes are brand new and we really just don't know, the law of unintended consequences. That's why we have a conditional use. It's a special tool for a special use. And then again, there's a beautiful release valve. We just don't know, but if you go out and you have a parking study done and your experts come back because neither the school district nor the planning staff are parking experts. If your parking experts say that you only have one in ten students that drive, then we can change the cap. It's easy to do, but we have the data to support that change. Two, project is short on parking. They can always buy that piece of property. I know, I know it sounds like a lot, but it's not the first time that the planning department or the city has asked a private company or a private entity to buy more parking to be downtown. You know, we also put Valleywide through kind of the same thing when they were trying to buy the courthouse. And to be honest, the parking limitations killed just about every other use in the courthouse. So it wasn't until Valleywide was interested in buying it and Valleywide had other parking to satisfy the parking minimums that they became the only viable person for a big, important building downtown. So it's it's not the first time that these things have been impediments to development. But unfortunately, because parking is so contentious in our downtown, we don't really have any choice but to enforce those rules. Three, downtown character, we just talked about this, retail space allows them to be a real partner downtown. We love the moose swag idea. It's a great idea. But it's not necessarily the level of retail occupancy we would hope for. You know, having a handful of of things from T S C and ASU and the and the school district, that would be great. I don't know if they keep regular shop hours, I don't know if they'd attract all, a bunch of tourists or get people downtown, I don't know. That's another thing where this is sort of an experiment. Partnership. This one gets a little bit into the history. If you read the Novus, ma- maybe it's a little, not as much of a surprise. But we have had some issues with past leadership at the school district. It was very difficult to get them to finish paving Maroon. And they, it wasn't a priority to the school district, but it is a big priority for the community and that means it's a big priority for the city. If our constituents are complaining about a road that was promised to be paved and never gets paved, we're the ones that hold that line. And we just believe that as good partners, being really clear upfront what the expectations are on both side keeps our relationship intact. So our partnership is very, very important to us. And the last thing we want is for our expectations to be unclear. If we have the conditions, the expectations are clear, school district needs, knows what they need to do to be good partners. They know what we're willing to do to be good partners and we never have to be at odds again. And finally, consistency. We do need to treat them the way we treat everyone else. Granted, I know we've already bent our rules, we already waived some application requirements. We already let them apply for use before it was even part of our code. We have done some things that we've never done before for anyone else because we really care about the school district and we really care about our partnership. But at the end of the day, they're a private entity and we have to treat them like we would any other developer. And one of the comments made during public comment by the school district is that we've never done this to anyone else, made them someone devote square footage to retail or or another use. And that's not true because when Center for Restorative Programs came in, they came in as an office use, they used the downstairs and we came in a little after the fact. They'd already bought the building. It's not like we're gonna, I mean, we could kick them out, but we're, we don't do things like that generally. Just so you know, we can, but we try not to do that. And so we did, we had them devote half of their building to doing something that's more towards the vibrancy of downtown. So the Thai Hut is eighteen hundred square feet. And the Center for Restorative Programs had to do that to satisfy city requirements. So it's not the first time we've done that. We've held the line many, many times on the office uses downtown. There are a lot of time, it's probably our most unpopular rule. And it is one of the harder ones to enforce because there are a lot of buildings downtown that were set up to be offices. And we're trying to transition them to retail and entertainment. And it's hard, but we tell people that a lot. Parking thing also, it it really does, we hold the line on that a lot, makes a lot of people unhappy. Parking is expensive and you don't really see a return on your investment, but you sure make your neighbors happy. And then finally, again, this conditional use permit is as living document as much as the code. If they can go out and provide the data we need, they can change it. This isn't set in stone. And so that, I believe, is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. James. Councilor Carson, you're up first.
First, I have a question. Who owns the parking lot?
So there's, there's two different parking lots, so I want to make sure we're clear. The school district's negotiations is for the actual building itself. And then that, what is now a parking lot where a building used to sit just right across the alleyway. So that is where, what they're in negotiations for right now. Across the street is that whole other parking lot. Initially, the the school district did not have an interest in that and trying to work for it through a bankruptcy is is not easy either. But they are looking at it to at least try to get, get a figure. But they're on a pretty tight budget as well. So I I can't say how serious their intentions are for that big parking lot on Sixth Street, but they are asking questions to find out what that would cost.
No, who owns it?
Who, the bankruptcy.
Big one is the trustee for the Friday Health Plans bankruptcy.
We, we might want to use this.
The bankruptcy trustee for Friday Health Plans is, it's Friday Health Plans, but they're in bankruptcy, so the trustee is in charge of it.
So when somebody buys it, whoever that may be, they can just close it off and and not let anybody park?
No, we've got an agreement that runs with the property that that allows for the public use in the farmer's market.
Okay, so with that being said, I don't know why parking's an issue. That I'm just, I'm very confused as to that because, you know, a few yards away or across the street, there's a public parking that's huge and I think anybody could use that. That's just my confusion. But to get to the, to the concession point, to the point, I I do have a weird issue with the cap. You know, I trust Lori, you've been an educator, you educated my kids, I, I trust your judgment. I'm not an educator, I'm not going to try to build, you know, a program around your students and I, and I would trust you guys to do that. So that's a little weird for me. But again, I do, I do, you know, understand the planning commission's issues. I do, however, I, you know, it's kind of a sticking point for me on the retail space. You know, and money for retail, I mean, go ask Starbucks, they'll build it for you. They put Starbucks everywhere, you know what I mean? I think, I think it's probably wouldn't be that hard to find somebody to help you build that retail space. But I, for me, that's kind of a hard sticking point. I really would like to see you guys do something with that. Personally, I think it would really look nice in that area and on that corner. But I I do have a kind of an issue with the cap, guys, I'm willing to flex a little bit on that. I'm just feeling weird about the retail space. I think you guys do need to concede a little to her point, we do have a lot, we do concede, or we do. to her point, we do have a lot. We do concede or we do enforce that a lot, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can I, the, so the, the Sixth Street parking lot, the one where the farmer's market is during the day?
Correct.
That belongs to whoever owns the parking lot.
Yeah, the agreement is only for public parking outside of um normal business hours.
No, I got you, but but technically as of today, sitting in this room right now, nobody owns it. If somebody wants to go park there, they can.
They can, but in the past, we've had individuals who wanted to satisfy their parking requirements by leasing and we've denied it. Because if you don't own the property and it changes, then we're left without parking type of situation. So we've always required developers to have control of the property that satisfies the parking requirements.
Okay, um I'm just gonna make a suggestion here. Uh I don't know how this would work um as far as that parking and I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes, but I would suggest that as a city, we try to help them figure that out by either whoever buys it, trying to work something out with them for a lease for the school for a minimal price for parking. Again, I, I, you know, we're trying to do what we can as a partner.
So what I've offered the school district is if they can purchase it, and and this all depends on the price. And and I know Rachel has talked to the appraiser that's been hired by the trustee for Friday Health to try to help them understand that there is not much value in this property at all. Because not only do we have the lease that allows public parking outside of the non-business hours, which probably doesn't hurt the value that much, but the requirement that whoever buys it will have to pave the other half. So it's a, it's kind of a black hole. So what I've offered is if they're able to get a decent price and I don't know their finances and and all of that stuff. But if they wanted to to sell it to the city from a lower price, not that we have any money in the budget, but we have an interest and we can do the same agreement where we attach it to the property where it counts for their parking, satisfies those needs, we can still use it for public parking outside of their use time, allow the farmer's market, and we would be the ones to figure out how to get it paved type of thing. So that is something that's been offered.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, whatever. I don't know if that's real realistic or what, but I'm trying, trying to help them in that cost and trying to help them recoup some of the money to build that retail space wherever that would come through. Again, I just, I think to be fair, you know, to all sides, we do have to address some of those points, so. Sorry, guys, but that's just kind of where I sit.
Thank you, councillor Carson, councillor Jamie Dominguez, and then councillor Yan V. Hill. And then councillor Cribs.
So the only thing that I'm, that worries me right now is the the cap. If they've already have the waiting list that puts them at that cap right now for us to either wait five years or or somebody to figure this parking lot that just sits there because of the limited parking spaces in the back. That makes me nervous. I hate for twenty, to put twenty-five more kids on hold because of a parking issue that I think is mostly empty all the time now, and I think people still parking it, and I mean.
And so just to, just to clarify, um they're, they don't have to wait five years. So if they're able to to hire a parking professional to do a study, to show the data, then, you know, it can, it can be a few months type of situation. It may not, not knowing if ten percent's correct or if they look at it and it's twenty percent, thirty percent. So I don't know how much the numbers would give them type of thing. But so that's, that's all that it would take as far as from just the parking perspective.
So I guess my other question is, I guess I should know this. I'm a business owner. Do they have any control of how many people park in their parking lot? Can the issue like parking passes?
They control their property. So however they want to control their property is is up to them. So they can put signage, they can hire security. They can do parking passes. However, they want to control that parking lot is completely up to them.
So what kind of weight does that hold if they tell their student body that only twenty or thirty of them can drive to school? Does that?
Well, what will probably happen is, and and again, this is not to say Friday Health is comparable because it is a different use. But Friday Health tried everything to get their employees to park in the other areas. And the employees kept parking on the streets, which was creating some of the parking stuff. And so my guess is if if students can't park in that parking lot, they're, they're gonna park other areas.
Councillor uh Yan V. Hill and then councillor Cribs and then councillor Carson.
I, I'm going into my twelfth year here on council. And I think I'm trying to, I've really been trying to remember over the last two weeks, have we ever gone against a recommendation from planning and zoning? I think it was one time, maybe eight or nine years ago, for a garage that was turned into a healthcare place, a, a a daycare center or a haircut place. I forgot. So we have a track record of following the recommendations of planning and zoning. I disagree with these respectfully. I honor the work you guys have put into this. I think the cap should go up. I just want, I want, I want, I I might go at a different angle, okay? Uh right now, the the per pupil funding for the state of Colorado, a student is worth, and I hate to say it like this, for a school district, ten thousand dollars. So right now, the the current enrollment of that school is fifty-nine. There's a waiting list. If that is, that could be, that could be forty thousand more dollars into the school district, which could help pay for a position, give a teacher a raise, help students with a computer or anything. That could be money that would go down and spend at at one of the businesses down there. So I, I, I would like to see the cap go up to a hundred. And then you mentioned this, uh the uh, the parking study, the expert. In my humble opinion, and I'm just a city councillor and a public school teacher, I think the expert is sitting right there. She's the principal who's in that building every day. She knows, she sees the parking lot, she knows who's coming in. Okay, I want to remind people that um that there are currently fifty-nine students enrolled in that school. And that at, at one point, their max number of kids in that building is a tw- is twenty-six. Twenty-six kids, and of that twenty-six, six of them are driving. Six of them are driving. I don't understand this hang up on the parking. I don't understand. The the deal with the retail business or of of what, you know, that to to honor and maybe to give, like, like you're saying, uh, Mr. Carson, that is something that I I I think should happen as well. I would, I I don't want to de- devalue what the students could have there and what they could create as a thinker space, as a place where students in that C T E, that post-secondary workforce readiness, which is a standard and a, and a and and something that every student has to have and go through to graduate high school in Colorado, that could be, that could become a pretty neat space. So I would like to give them some leeway there to let them plan that out and see what it's gonna look like. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh councillor Carson, I mean councillor Yan V. Hill. Uh councillor Cribs, you're next, and then councillor Carson.
Thank you, mayor. I have a pretty good memory. I have one of those weird memories I always wondered about as a kid because I could read something or hear a conversation. And I can, I can see it in my brain play out. And when I saw the hundred and I saw the number of students, excuse me, at fifty-nine, I thought back to the, the work session that we all went to. And I was thinking, I never heard those numbers. And one of the silver linings about COVID is that the work session was recorded. So I was able to go back and re-watch that entire thing because I thought I must have missed it. I was taking tons of notes. I was asking lots of questions. I must have missed it. And one of the things I did remember that I was able to actually watch again was that city staff at the very, right after your initial presentation, one of their first questions out of the gate was, we don't have a hard number of students that are gonna be in that building. Can you give us a hard number of students? And your answer was forty-five. Your answer was forty-five. Give or take, kids coming in, kids leaving, the online kids don't count. Your answer was forty-five. So imagine when I look this over and I look at the recommendation of the planning commission and I see seventy-five and I go, oh, that's reasonable. That's cool. That's a good buildup number. That's not set in stone. And there's pushback. And I'm seeing slides that say a hundred. And I didn't hear that, not even a month ago. So mayor, I know that there's more discussion to be had. I am fine with the planning commission's recommendations because those are recommendations that can be relooked at down the road after we have official data. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cribs. Uh councillor Carson?
Well, that was gonna be my question. How do we do something, uh, you know, how do we create a parking study with no data? Cause it's fairly new, but you just answered. I mean, you know, we can look at it again later on. Is that, that was my question. I mean, Lori's the one that sees those students every day. She would be the person that we would have to ask and it would be kind of the the authority on it. Um I, you know, I can't say in depth that I really listened to that or anything like that, but that's who I would have trusted for the count. So yeah, that, that is a little bit of a weird deal there, but uh that was my question. How do we get that data if it's new and this is a new endeavor, so?
Okay. Any other comments before I make a comment? Councillor Hensley, go ahead.
So I'm torn on it and I guess one of the things that for me it, the fact that it can come to, back to us, even if it's in two, three months, whatever. I have a hard time going against what the, the uh zoning committee has said. If it was something where this is gonna last forever, I, I think then I obviously would be thinking this harder. I guess what I'm thinking is that obviously by the time that you get this going, that you have the students come in, it could be three months or so and you could come back and say to us, we want a hundred, a hundred and fifty. So I'm sort of at this point, I'm still listening to everybody. I'm, I'm more with the idea of potentially keeping it the way it is and that you just come back and say that, hey, we changed our numbers and we want to do this again. And obviously, I'm very supportive of the school. I'm very supportive of the stuff going on down there. And so obviously, we just have a little bit more data. Um and so within a few months, we could get to that point if it was needed. So that's sort of where I'm going at this point.
Thank you councillor Hensley. Councillor uh Yan V. Hill?
So respectfully, it it's not gonna be one hundred students in the building at the same time. And where am I going with this? So, so so if you just adjust those numbers, now we're looking at like forty to forty-five kids in the building at one time. I, that's, that's not a big stretch for me. That, this is, this is not for me. It's not, it's not. And I don't think they're fudging numbers. I don't think they're hiding numbers. They, they've come to us with more concrete data.
Uh councillor Jackie V. Hill?
So, um when this was first presented to me, um so is the hundred cap like the student, the enrollment, it's not saying there's gonna be a hundred students there at one time. Is that correct?
So, kind of. So the, so correct. It's the, the, the hundred, the seventy-five, whatever this cap is we're talking about is the number enrolled. The data that would be really good is if this educational use drives differently and 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 doesn't have the same parking patterns as the regular educational use, like that data would be good to collect type of situation, because for us, this, this cap relates to how much parking is available type of situation. So those are the two different types of numbers and how they kind of relate. So, so where there's areas of different opinion is do we just go with thinking the different driving right off of the bat, even though that's not in our code? Or not, but the cap, that cap is enrollment. That's higher than what the number would be at any one time. There.
So, um like other councillors have said, Ms. Smith knows how many people drive. I mean, I don't see, I don't see the parking as an issue. Um I'm kind of torn at this point, but I don't see the parking as an issue. There's not gonna be a hundred students there at one time. So I don't know, I'm kind of um thinking that I know when I thought about the cap before, I was like, okay, it was recommended by the planning commission and maybe that's what we should go for, but just after listening after everybody's been talking, I mean, I, I don't know if I agree with the cap at this point for the seventy-five.
Okay, councillor uh Jamie Dominguez?
I really struggle with the fact that money would solve this problem right now. And I hate the fact that because somebody said some this is, this is growing. Um if we keep holding people accountable for looking into expanding, that don't make no sense to me. Of course, there's gonna be more, more kids that come. The cap, I think, is really hindering me because we have fifty kids waiting just to finish high school right now. And for five hundred thousand dollars to buy a parking lot fixes it. I drop my daughter off at that school every day. My daughter isn't altered. They don't even feel for parking lots and me to wait and for, for somebody to have to spend more money for somebody who ain't from here to do a study, it doesn't make sense to me. I understand it, um Friday House, their scenario, i- it is different. Everything is different. We have to, if we keep putting everything in a cookie cutter scenario, we're gonna run into these while we have fifty kids who just want to graduate. And if half a million dollars fixes this, this is just unfortunate. If somebody had a half a million dollars right now to buy the parking lot and then we could educate kids, I don't support that. I really don't.
Okay, I don't know who had their mic on first, councillor Hensley, then uh councillor Yan V. Hill, and this time after councillor Yan V. Hill, I'm gonna make some comments. Okay?
I'm just gonna make a motion.
No, I'm gonna make some comment.
Okay, then I'll wait.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if, if it was up to me, like there would be no cap to students who want to succeed and and better their life and and graduate. But because it's a brand new thing, in a very unique situation downtown, I understand the one hundred. I just want that to be known. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let you go then.
Okay, so um I got an opportunity to participate, I believe, in a work session via Zoom. I had an opportunity to read all the material that we all get to read. City council doesn't uh take lightly what planning and zoning uh recommends because they put a lot of time, a lot of energy and effort into their decisions. This project has been a very, very unfortunate type of project uh to go through these routes uh that has taken city council, the planning commission, city staff has allocated a lot of quality time to try to do all we can do to make this process move smoothly. When city staff ask questions, they ask questions to help them make better decisions. So when they present it to city council, they're able to share that, the results, the pros, the cons, the differences to us. When they ask several times, how many students are you gonna have? When they ask uh about um what your use is gonna be for building, when they're trying to make a conditional use permit offer, they need legitimate information. So when they come to council, we don't have a situation like we have right now. When they ask, um how many years do you need to bring this development to to pass? And the participants say, we need up to five years. And then they present it to us and say, okay, they said five years. And then we're told, we don't want a cap. Why wasn't that told to us at the beginning that you didn't want a cap? Because that makes it difficult for all of us to make sure that future businesses that come through our community abide by our codes. I believe someone made the comments that our codes I believe someone made the comments that our codes matter. If we don't abide by the codes with this entity in which we all respect the school district, we respect the students. We want them to have a good educational place, but this is just one entity. Other entities that have come through city council and planning has had to abide by these rules. Several council members sitting on this podium right here today have had to deal with the backlash and negative comments from people who argued and did not wanna follow the parking code requirements, but eventually had to do it. We're already making several, several compromises in this transaction. So when we're talking about making sure that they have public parking spaces, we're not saying it because a person says they're gonna have a hundred students and maybe five are gonna be driving. The parking code permits that Ms. James is talking about, it's not based on what someone tells about us about who's showing up to school. What it's based on is how many square foot that building is. And that's fair for any business or entity that is gonna do business in Alamosa. Whenever we're thinking about the code, we have to think about not only this entity, but we gotta think about what's right, what's just, what's fair, and what we have done to other businesses that's come through this process. Yeah, I know it's hard. I know people are torn and know, know it's a difficult decision to make. The other thing we have to be conscious of as council is we have to make sure that we have teeth. And whatever we say we're gonna do, we'll be able to back it up and follow up and follow through. If not, anything that you're holding them accountable for, you won't be able to hold them accountable. The next council won't be able to hold them accountable. We have to be conscious when you go against what the planning and zoning department says, if we don't have justification, uh, to go against it. Now with, staff has given the school district many outs. They're saying, okay, if this doesn't work for you, you can go out and get a study done and come back and share it with us and then we'll change the recommendations. They're not holding them to the fire. That's something practical. That is a compromise. The Main Street Advisory Committee, how many of you got phone calls from them? Several of you did, just like I did. You know what they said? Why don't you just follow the rules? You're making an exception. Why don't you just follow the rules? These are business owners that own businesses downtown. And guess what they have to do every day? They have to follow the rules. But what we're doing is modifying the rules to make it to where we can accommodate an entity which we all want to. But at some point in time, you gotta stick to what the guidelines say. So with that being said, I'm gonna open it up to Ms. Hensley, let her make her comments. So Ms. James, if you have anything you have to say, feel free to do so at this time.
Okay. So I agree with both you and Councilor Krebs, but I believe we have four votes that are gonna go the other way. So instead of going around in circles, I'm gonna just make a motion. And so I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we adjust it to a hundred cap, but keep section two.
And, uh, Councilor Hensley, you can't do that.
Okay.
Tonight, I mean, you could, so the motion.
How you want it said, and then we'll do.
So if you don't, if you don't, if you don't adopt what the planning commission recommended, we have to set it for the next meeting.
Don't say what we're gonna do.
Well, you can talk about what you wanna do. Um, that's all fine. You just can't vote. So unless you ratify planning commission, you can vote on that tonight. But if you're gonna change it, we have to set it at the next public meeting, but you can continue to talk about it all you want.
Okay, I'm just.
Motion then would be to, um, not adopt or not ratify the planning commission's decision, but instead to set it for a public hearing on November twentieth or some subsequent meeting.
So what does it mean by not ratifying?
Well, so what happens is, and Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, but planning commission actually makes a decision, which they did. And now you can ratify that decision tonight. Or you can say, we're not gonna ratify that decision. We think we might want to do something different. You don't have to know what that something different is. All you have to know is that you think you might want to. And then set it for a public hearing so that you can have more input and make another decision.
So, so to be clear on the details, the planning commission was the two conditions. The retail space of fifteen hundred and the cap at seventy-five. So if you're, if you're gonna do those, you can vote on those tonight. If you're gonna change them in the direction you were starting to head in, but when you're looking at the comments and the votes was to increase it to a hundred, that means you need to do the public hearing November twentieth and you can vote on it at that time.
Councilor Carson has a question.
Why? We, we, we changed motion all the time.
Simply because you haven't had a public hearing. Planning commission had the public hearing. You haven't heard from the public.
This is the process set out in the code for this type of consideration for especially. We don't normally do these. Yeah, we don't, don't normally do these. So yeah, that's, that this is the process for this specific type of thing.
So if we were to have a public hearing like Councilor Carson is saying, will it then have to go back to the planning commission again?
No, no. So if you make a motion to set it over to November twentieth, you will hold the public meeting and then you can, you can do what any conditions you want.
Okay, so is there not a timeline on this transaction anymore?
My understanding is the end of November.
Okay. Councilor Carson?
So, is it, like, let's just say we were to ratify this right now. Can you guys not move forward? With the seventy-five cap and then isn't it, I mean, that's not set in stone. We can change that later. Again, didn't we talk about that? So why, why wouldn't we just move forward so that you can proceed with the transaction and get this rolling? I'm just kinda curious about that.
That's council's prerogative. I, that's your prerogative.
So, so we're not gonna, we're not really opening it up to the, to the public or the, because we don't do that under this part. So I just wanted to just make sure you are not asking any questions to them. But this is the time to have those discussions to talk about. He brought up a valid question. If we ratified it today, utilizing, uh, the numbers that the planning and zoning, uh, recommended, if they come back and follow the procedures that are recommended, there's not anything wrong or anything that you can see, Ms. James, that would cause, uh, us to make changes to accommodate that?
Yes, the only clarifying remark I would make in response to Councilor Jackie V Hill is that when we make parking recommendations and when the code make parking recommendations, they're not necessarily talking about today's student body. So even though the principal sees today's student body and their driving habits, it's like, it's like building the church for Christmas. You know, that's what the parking standards are for, not the maximum amount, but not necessarily just the least amount. It's the, the average amount that would be used. And it's, it's just, we joke a lot that what's in the code is bad data, which is best available data. We just don't know.
Well, and a parking firm would most likely talk to everyone who's been mentioned today as experts. Like that's part of the data collection art type thing as well.
Including talking to the principal. And I did have one other just fun clarification. This is gonna take you off track a little bit. But the only time that you did disagree with the ratification that I know of was to allow a junkyard on the river. That was it. So planning commission didn't want a junkyard on the river and council said, okay. So that wasn't.
Okay, all right. Councilor Hensley and then Councilor Carson.
I do have a question. So on your math slide, what would the parking been if it was all office space? Would we have fallen, would it have fallen in the boundaries? And then also, the parking, if it's retail space?
Probably won't be able to answer the retail space on the fly, but I could answer the other one. So.
Is it less spaces or more spaces?
Uh, it's sixty-six spaces, I think.
Mayor, I have a question. Is there?
So, so then this parking would have been appropriate? Okay, I just wanted to know that. Okay, thank you.
If it was all office.
Okay.
And, um, we, we can, we can, we can take our time. We're not in no rush anybody. So I want you to feel free to ask any questions you have. Because I want us to be conscious of the, the timing of all of this as well. So let's just talk it through until we come to some type of a resolution to either move forward with the way it's written or either put it off to another meeting. Go ahead, Councilor.
Uh, Councilor Dominguez had, had a, a pretty, um, important question. How much is a traffic study or a parking study? And my addition to his question is, can we, can you, is it possible to get it done in kind?
You hire a professional. So there is no in-kind for us. And i- it's probably depending on who they hire, anywhere from like five thousand to ten thousand. Where's Harry?
And what's the window? Like what's the, how, how, like a building inspector six months behind or a, a brazier, how far behind is?
Harry, I don't know if you know any of this type of thing. I think maybe one of the benefits is we are in the winter time. So you, you know, other types of development isn't as aggressive right now.
Somebody else had their light on. Yes.
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I move that we reject the plans of the P N Z. And we have an, uh, uh, hearing on the twentieth.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, uh, our city attorney, is that a legitimate motion? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion passed four to three with Councilors Hensley, Mayor Coleman, and Councilor Krebs casting the no vote.
Okay. All right. So the next step, so that everybody's aware who's in the audience, so we can make sure they're fair to, to know about what's the next steps. If we can just share with them what the next steps will be so that they can be present during that process.
Okay, so November twentieth at seven PM, city council will have a regular meeting. Thankfully, with this having a public hearing, then you can do a presentation during the public hearing time. Um, and this is the only item that's gonna related to you, that's gonna be on the November twentieth. So the other two items are passed, they're done. Um, it's just this item related to the conditions. And that will be on November twentieth. At that time, council can talk through any number of changes, um, that you want. The, it's, it's open-ended type of thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is a motion, uh, expressing support for the Alamosa Riverfront Project. This is the project we discussed earlier, uh, at the work session.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Council. Mayor? Uh, yes, here to request a motion of support for the Alamosa Riverfront Project, which you got an overview today. Uh, this transformational project is the result of a lot of years. Right? If you remember, the top priority for our department coming out of our last comp plan update was activate the Rio Grande Corridor. And here we are, you know, five, six years later. And I think when you're doing that day to day, you lose sight of that, but, but that's exciting. Uh, I wanna publicly thank our partners, first of all. Cassandra and the, the restoration project, they, they are a tremendous partner. Not only have they helped us with this and raised over three hundred thousand dollars for design and engineering, they, they helped us automate the independent ditch. They did some restoration work above the Riparian Park. So they are doing great work in our community. And a lot of times I stand up here and get credit for stuff. Well, they have been driving this project. And when you look at it and it, how it's a city goal and it aligns with council and department goals, um, the work has been tremendous. So, um, this project reconnects everyone to our lifeblood. I think it's, we think it's important that leadership directly written or in a public meeting expresses support for this project. Considering there's a long road ahead of implementation and work. Um, but this, this is a transformational project for our community. And with that, I'll ask for any questions.
Okay, Councilor Jan V Hill?
No questions. Just really appreciate all the work. I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, express support for the Alamosa Riverfront Project.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Um, I just would like to make a, a comment. I really enjoyed the presentation at, um, when they were out doing outreach in the community and to hear that over, you know, five hundred and some respondents. And also to hear that over fifteen hundred with the media that you put out there, uh, that's very important. And, and oftentimes we hear the community say, well, when we start construction three or four years, however many years from now, there're gonna be a lot of people say, I didn't know anything about it. And I'm gonna go back to the notes. And I'm gonna let them know every meeting that we had. And I'm gonna let them know all of the media publications that went out talking about this very thing, because people tend to have selective amne- amnesia when the time comes. But we will be discussing that. But I wanna thank you so very much for your efforts. And, uh, we're all looking forward for, uh, for this to, to come to fruition. All right, start voting, everybody. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
Good job. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Andy. Okay, Council, that brings us to the next item, uh, on the agenda. Public hearing and second reading for ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty-two, four, renewal of the I G A with the city of Montevista for the provision of information technology services. Brandon.
Thank you and good evening, Council. Tonight before you is the option to extend our eight-year relationship with the city of Montevista. The I T department for the city of Alamosa has provided I T services over those eight years. It's been mutually beneficial. We have not only been able to expand our staff, but we've been able to cross-train. We've been able to fulfill further spots to allow that, to allow us to respond to service, uh, calls. We've been able to also, uh, benefit from many other options or many other, uh, uh, discussions that we've had with the city of Montevista. Um, having a relationship like this has been, uh, beneficial for us to, to discuss, you know, the ADA law, how we're gonna approach that. Uh, today we had a discussion, uh, concerning, uh, paper weights and, and how we, uh, print, uh, water bills. So it's been quite beneficial for both of us. So before you is the option to continue that relationship.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we are going to open up the public hearing for ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty-two, four, the renewal of the I G A with the city of Montevista for the provision of information technology services. We have anyone in the audience who would like to, uh, make any comments during this hearing, please feel free to come up to the podium and make your comments at this time. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience making any comments, so we'll go to Zoom. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand by using the raise your hand feature so you can be recognized and, uh, make your comments in this public hearing. Ms. Martinez, I don't see any hands raised.
I don't either, Mayor.
So I'm gonna bring it back to Council, to, uh, Councilor Jan V Hill.
Mayor, I mo- I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty-two, four.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Brandon, I'm just gonna make a comment. You all are rocking and rolling. Keep it up. That is awesome. I'm really glad to see that collaboration working. And, uh, that's a good example for other communities to do, uh, with cities in, in their proximity. So thank you for doing that. And I hear nothing but great things about the work you and your team are doing. Okay, with that being said, please start voting. All right.
The motion carried unanimously.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay. Brings us to the next item. Manager Legal, motion directing staff on whether to move forward with the design of the soup kitchen slash low barrier shelter, formerly a low barrier cold weather shelter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this has been a project for several years that has been jointly planned between the city of Alamosa and La Puente. The idea, I think, um, from a city perspective was interest in being responsive to those residents who live on State Avenue and see if we could find a better location for the operations of that soup kitchen. Conversely, as we opened St. Benedict's, there was COVID restrictions on the shelter. There's comments from the community as far as what happens during snowstorms for residents out at St. Benedict's. The, the idea. The, the idea of a cold weather shelter kind of started to surface as well. And then the two, the two items collided into what was to be known as a facility that would help move that soup kitchen um out to where Saint Benedict's is, combine it with a night use during cold weather months um for cot use essentially. And um, both the city and La Puente leadership agreed to that and we worked on securing grants. We have secured a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in grants to put towards a total cost of two hundred and forty thousand for design and engineering of that building. However, in, in all this time, the Supreme Court, in their wisdom, reversed some longstanding um court legal decisions as it relates to enforcing no camping ordinances. And when council held the public meeting, you heard from residents some, some different concerns and of categories. One is related to the co- the location of Saint Benedict's, the impact of, on the industrial park, the location next to our recreational facilities, the impact on the, the residential area that's nearby. You also heard concerns about, does the existence of Saint Benedict encourage individuals not from the valley to come here and does it enable them type of situation? And as we listened to that public comment, a concern staff had was a lot of that could be said of this facility as well. It's the same location um and some people could argue that um the same logic applies as far as attraction and enabling. And so before we spent a dime of that grant dollars, we wanted to bring it back before City Council because if we do the design and engineering from a credibility perspective, staff feels strongly that we need to move forward with the construction as well. And if anything had changed because of the im- the input from the community, we wanted to make sure to take this time and, and have the discussion. At the same time, you've heard from La Puente that they've evaluated what their capacity is to do a cold weather, low barrier shelter and they've determined that that's not something they can do operationally. And so what changed from them, for them is from being able to just operate it during the cold weather, it became a necessity to where it needed to be year round. From a staff leadership perspective, we have discussed this and we would recommend not moving forward with this change. We feel that a year round low barrier shelter very much hits at those concerns we heard from the public in that meeting and um raises concerns for us from a, from a staff leadership perspective. Additionally, um, the homeless coalition did discuss this issue and with the focus being on the change from the cold weather to year round. Um, and while they didn't have a quorum, so they could not vote on it, a majority of them were not comfortable with the project moving forward either. There is another thing that has changed since the creation of this project as well, and that is the lifting of the COVID restrictions. Prior to those COVID restrictions, um, La Puente often operated what they call cot nights, where at the shelter, they put in some cots at the, the first floor individuals. So it acted kind of like a low barrier cold weather shelter is essentially what those cot nights activate or act as. And so those restrictions, the COVID restrictions prevented the shelter from being able to do that and they actually lasted a lot longer than I think a lot of people realize, but they have since been lifted. And so I know last winter is when La Puente looked either at churches or in their shelter at doing some cot nights type of situation. So we do feel that the pressure there has alleviated a little bit as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to City Council.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sanchez. I'll start off with uh Counselor Yon V Hill and then I'll go to Counselor Carson and then Counselor Krebs.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a quick rundown for me, I remember talking about this with Mr. Carson at one of our retreats. I think this past summer or even, or two summers ago, uh, I don't remember, but um, I was interested if it was a cold shelter emergency, but that's not what it's gonna be. I've been inundated, we've all been inundated with people who are against it. So yeah, we, I'm, I'm not for this, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yon V Hill, Counselor uh Carson, then Counselor Krebs, then Counselor Jackie V Hill.
Um. Yeah, the original intent has been strayed from quite a bit. Uh, I did, I had lunch with Lance the other day and I told him, and I'm just putting this out here since I had this conversation with him. I told him that if he were to be able to pull, because you know, my original promise to Donna was move in that shelter. Um, so my suggestion to them was move forward with something in the, in their lot where they have uh Cross from Malta, you know, attain a Brownsville grant, clear it, move all their facilities to one spot. And I think the city would be more apt to, to give them a thumbs up with that. Um, as far as just expanding these services and then the change, I think, yeah, it's, it's better for us to just return the money and then try to give them some guidance and trying to consolidate all their services into a spot that's owned by them already. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, Counselor Krebs, then Counselor V Hill, Jackie V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
I'm, I'm a little sad because I was very excited about being a cold weather shelter, about being able to have a building um where, not just for the City of Alamosa, but for possibly used by the county for an emergency management situation. If there's a wildfire or something, we could be a partner county and, and help them out. So I was actually very excited for this. To see the narrative change into becoming a, a twenty-four hour shelter distressed me because that was never the purpose. And I think even a few months before that, when we were discussing Saint Benedict's, La Puente came up representing La Puente and said, you know, it, it might be an attractor, but it's not and our numbers are down and, you know, please keep Saint Ben's open. So we discussed it and we're, with rules in place, we kept Saint Ben's open. And now all of a sudden, we're hearing from La Puente that there is homeless out there and that they do need a shelter, but only the twenty-four hour one. And my concern is, we move forward, we invest the money, we build a building for the use that it is intended. And then a year from now, two years from now, La Puente partners with us, then decides they don't want to partner with us unless they can do this, this, and this. And I'm very uncomfortable with that. And so I would rather, knowing that the, the churches are willing to step up, knowing that La Puente has their, their cot program in place at the shelter, and I'm hoping that those hundred people that Lance spoke of earlier, I hope some of them found some room there. Um, I am, I am fine stepping away from this and giving the money back. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs, Counselor Jackie V Hill.
I agree with that. Um, I've thought about this a lot and although I wasn't around for the original intent of what this was supposed to be, it's changed for sure. And in my mind, I thought, well, since the, the, the law has changed and, you know, we're not required to do anything, um, I just see it as something that might attract people from other places. And I just see it as like, come to Alamosa because you get a place to sleep, you get a hot shower and you get three meals. And so I think the original intent of it was, you know, to have um a place for people to go, a cold weather shower or shelter. But now the, the, the whole intent has changed and so I'm in agreement with just giving the money back.
Thank you, Counselor uh Jackie V Hill, Counselor uh Carson, then Counselor Hensley, and then Counselor Dominguez, are you gonna want to make any comments? Okay, you do, okay.
I was just gonna ask if you need a motion or if this is a consensus item, do you need a motion so that we make this official?
I would, I would prefer a motion.
So let's let her finish and I have a comment.
Well, I was gonna make a comment, but if you need a motion, I'll just go ahead and tie it into a motion and I move that we give the money back.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Um, because I'm gonna make a comment. All right, so Counselor, a couple, well, a couple of weeks ago, I sent you an email because I was gonna be out of town if that um work session was gonna take place. Uh, while I was out of town, um, I just wanted you to know my views. So for the sake of my comments, I'm just gonna read this um email that I submitted uh back then uh because my feelings are still the same. After gathering input from the public and meeting with Lance and Wilson from La Puente, I recommend that we do not move forward with establishing a year round low barrier shelter and soup kitchen. A low barrier facility allows certain behaviors that currently disqualify individuals from staying at La Puente State Street Shelter. Given the lack of demonstrated needs since COVID and restrictions were lifted and considering public concerns about destructive behavior, enabling, drug activity, violence, bullying, prostitution, and the shelter's proximity to the rec center, I propose that we return the grant funds received for this project. Uh, that's the email communications I share with staff and council and uh my feelings have not changed. Uh, so we currently have a motion, we have a second, uh, no further discussions, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, uh, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports today, anybody? Uh, Counselor Jackie V Hill?
Um, so we had the um homeless coalition and like Heather said, they weren't in agreement, I, I mean, there was some there that were in agreement with the um soup kitchen, but mostly um, most of the people that were there that night were not in agreement. Um, they did talk about um rolling out the rules for Saint Benedict and I believe they're gonna start in November, having meetings at Saint Benedict to kind of talk to the residents and tell, talk about the rules and stuff. But I believe the December first or second, second is gonna be when they roll out the new rules for Saint Benedict's. And then they talked about having a second cleanup at Saint Benedict's and changing the time to two P M. And pretty much um, that was the gist of the meeting, right? Is there anything else that?
Um, that's, no, that's the gist of it. And then with some changes in the police department, we've also seen some enforcement of the existing rules, which seems to be making a difference and it, and, oh, and the homeless coalition looked at trying to brainstorm on what we want to track so we can report back to City Council on how the rules are working. And so what data is needed, how are we gonna collect it and that type of stuff? Um, but I will say just from conversations with the police department and our um co-responder program, some of the individuals that were kind of alluded to as, as bad apples have been handled and um there's already starting to be some improvement out at Saint Benedict's.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to um look it up. Um, I attended the, the council of governments meeting and they recently received an award for all of their work on a few of the issues and I was trying to get it absolutely correct. And so of course, I'm not gonna be able to find it on my phone, my apologies. But um, it, it was a big celebration for them to be able to be recognized for that. Um, I'm also on the board for the senior center and I don't know if a lot of you are aware of, of this. The South Central seniors, the ones that come into the kitchen at the senior center and provide the meals and they drive the meals out to the homebound, have stepped back from delivering on and providing food on Thursdays just to meet some of their budgetary things. The Alamosa Senior Center Board voted to try to keep those Thursday meals going to not just the people that come in for the food, but also they're trying to figure out how to get the meals delivered as well. That's a little bit trickier with liability issues and what have you. And so they estimate with, with gas costs and mileage and, and things of that nature. Um, even the once a week between now and they are thinking by the end of February, when they'll get another decision to see if it's something that might be an issue in the first future or if this is something that's just temporary. It's gonna be about thirty thousand dollars um because of food costs and, and things of that nature. The senior center has managed to raise ten thousand so far, but they are, and they are um looking for, they are applying for grants and they're, they're knocking on doors and shaking trees and such. But if um anyone in virtual world or in the community that would like to host a, a lunch on a Thursday and, and come in and cook and serve and things, um, they'd be more than happy to, to welcome the idea of it. And for right now, what they're going to do is they're gonna make bag lunches on Wednesday to go with the Wednesday meals that are getting delivered to make sure that, that the seniors have some food, the homebound seniors have some food on Thursday until they can figure out the delivery thing. Right now, they're estimating about forty to fifty people for the congregate that come to the senior center to eat and about a hundred, hundred to a hundred and ten that they deliver to on Thursday. So just to give you some numbers and some ideas. And if anyone again wants to volunteer a day, um, just re- reach out to the executive director, Stephanie Sales, and I'm sure she'd be willing to have that conversation.
And when you say host for a day, does that mean to buy all the food and um also volunteer and help?
Correct, correct. You, you, you would basically, you'd buy the food, you'd bring it, you'd, you'd cook it, you'd serve it and maybe package it to go.
Okay.
You know, things of that nature or even um, package the, the Wednesday meals, maybe bring in some sandwiches or some cheese and crackers or whatever, cookies, things of that nature to help put in the lunch packets for that Wednesday. And hopefully by, by February, this will be resolved and we won't have to discuss it anymore, so.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Krebs, uh, Counselor Hensley.
Um, so marketing uh tourism board, uh, the main thing, uh, things are going really well. And so obviously uh, the team's doing great. But one thing I guess to announce is that Beat the Heat has been sunsetted, so we won't have any more Beat the Heat. It was basically uh, what's happened is the organization that all of the participants are part of is going through a lot of internal struggles. And so they had a really hard time getting enough participants to compete so they would get the, the, it has to do with all the money and all of the winnings and stuff. And I think that with the idea that it, what it was, there, there was all the um extra stuff around it. So some of the, the games, the Bloody Berry contests, all those things were really uh, uh, some add-ons that were doing really well. But the Beat the Heat itself wasn't necessarily drawing in a ton of people. So just everything all put together. Um, so they'll be looking at something new, but just letting you know that that's in the past.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Hensley. Okay, I don't see any other lights on, so we'll go ahead and go to staff announcements.
Mayor, we do not have any announcements.
What? Man, we on the record too, wrong? Okay, 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 all right, no staff announcement. Okay, what about council comments? Any council comments?
I do, I do have, just real quick one. So I just want to thank all the staff. I know today, obviously with the weather and we have two more days potentially of this weather, I know the schools are shut down and so I know how hard each of you have to work for all of the things, including if our I T stuff goes down. I mean, there's just so many different things. So my hope is that it isn't as crisis for each of you, but at the same time, just wanna, um, we think, I guess I thank you every day, but especially on these type of situations, knowing how hard you all work.
Thank you, and then I'll wrap, wrap things up. Staff, you put a lot of work and time into preparing of us for council and I want you to know that we don't take the work that you do lightly and uh we value your input and suggestions, so keep up the great work that you all are doing. Okay, with that being said, this meeting is officially adjourned.